Hey Kevin.
Hey Kevin.
Morning, how are you?
Good, I'm warm and inside.
Hi everyone, are we all here? If you're on council, can you turn on your camera so I can see if you're here? Hi Nat.
How are you madam mayor?
Hi Wes.
I'm here too.
Jackie.
I'm here.
Ken.
Hi Kathy.
Gina, just looking for Ray now, I guess. Let me see, participants, Ray. He's not here yet. But it is nine oh one, actually, sorry about that, it's a bit late, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. Attendance at start of the meeting is six out of seven, I'm with councillor Watkins, hopefully on his way. Thanks for taking some time on a Thursday morning to do a special council meeting. We've got some big decisions ahead of us, so can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Ken?
Yeah, I guess I can do it. But the, nothing special.
Doesn't even bother anymore, so.
I guess nothing special about this one then, if I'm going to do. That the February 4th, 2021 special council agenda be adopted as presented.
Alright, thank you. Before I actually call for the vote on that, Mr. Scobal, any changes to the agenda?
Um, no.
Okay, okay, alright, call for the vote. So that's unanimous, six, nothing. We were supposed to have a presentation from the school boards, but it sounds like they're not coming. Cheryl, is there anyone else registered to speak?
No, we don't have anybody else registered to speak today.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so we're going to go to our first and only item on the agenda, which is COVID matters. Updates, discussion, and we have some decisions to make, so. I think this is probably Percy going to start us off, and I'm sure Diane's going to be jumping in as well, so take it away Percy.
You bet, I have a PowerPoint that Diane and I have created that I'll be sharing with you here shortly. Are you able to see the PowerPoint there?
Yes.
Perfect. Good afternoon, good morning, I guess, Mayor Heron and members of council, Diane and I are here today to present a summary of the government of Alberta's recently introduced Path Forward plan. And review step one for recreational facilities reentry. This presentation will include what the steps mean. Context from a COVID world, including current situation and challenges. Recreational facilities in a COVID world. Perspective on recreational facility use at step one and operating costs, plus administrative recommendations for your consideration. Administration has been following provincial announcements closely and been preparing for potential delays in relaxing restrictions and re. The current orders have no expiry dates associated on them that affect the province. City infrastructures such as pools, arenas, fitness set and theatre remain closed by provincial orders. This includes recreational facilities like Service Credit Union Place, Fountain Park Recreation Centre, Jerome Ginla and Kinnick's Arenas. On Friday, February, by January 29th, the province announced the Path Forward, a stepped approach to easing restrictions using hospitalizations as a key trigger. Hospitalizations have been identified as a lagging indicator or a late sign of where we are. A sign that will change well after other health indicators for COVID. So when signs have low, other signs have low numbers and hospitalizations are low, this becomes the right time to reduce the measures in place. The steps are related to hospitalization rates of less than 600 for step one. 450 at step two. Less than 300 at step three and less than 150 for step four. There is to be a minimum of three weeks waiting period between each step. So if everything goes very smoothly and, and has a quick transition, that would be a total of nine weeks between all those stages. Effective February 8th, 2021, there is a potential easing of measures in step one of the Path Forward. And those are for restaurant, pubs, bars, lounges and cafes can open for in-person service with a maximum of six people per table. And they must be individuals from the same household or too close contacts for people living alone, and there's some more details associated with that as well. What we're focusing on here today is the sports portion, and for that, this includes children's sport and performance activity. Children's sport and performance activities are permitted if related to us, to school activities such as physical education classes. K to 12 schools and post-secondary institutions are allowed to use off-site facilities to support curriculum-based educational activities. Also, for indoor fitness. Group or team sports are not permitted, that means no sports, games, competitions, team practice, league play or group exercise of any kind is allowed. One-on-one training is permitted. Only one-on-one or one-on-household training is permitted for indoor fitness activities. For example, fitness and dance studios, training figure skating on ice and one-on-one lessons. Sessions have to be scheduled by appointment and there are no drop-in or, or groups. Or groups allowed on those. All other measures, including gathering restrictions, business and service restrictions and mandatory masking remain in effect. Provincially, there have been a total of 125,090 total cases of COVID, of which 6,599 remain active along with. A total of 1,671 deaths. Alberta has moved to the fourth highest rate of active cases. Per 100,000 population in the country, currently behind Manitoba, Saskatchewan, Quebec, with, with the rate of 149 per 100,000. The situation in St. Albert, there's a total of 100, 1,942 cases have been reported, 93 of which are currently active. There have been 1,814 recovered cases and 35 deaths. I've said this before, statistics don't reflect immeasurable impacts from the loss of a loved one. We're living as a COVID long hauler with that post-COVID syndrome. These negative health outcomes illustrate why the provinces have implemented the public health measures. Also, regarding outbreaks, since March, there outbreaks have been identified in long-term care, extended care, the active treatment center. Childcare facilities, schools and other facilities in St. Albert. Currently, there still are outbreaks in long-term care, active treatment facility and childcare facilities. There are, there are three schools in St. Albert that have been identified on the provincial school status map. One school is in an outbreak status with 10 or more cases, and two schools are in alert status with two to four cases. In spite of being aware of outbreaks in the community, there is good news in the data, as the numbers of active cases are trending downwards provincially, regionally and St. Albert. These can be seen on the graphs that illustrate that, on this, on this, on the screen that illustrate this trend. And you see all the data since March 4th last year till yesterday's data was presented. Those downward trends are very visible. The number of active cases in St. Albert dropped below 100 this week for the first time since November 8th, 2020. This local and provincial trend is reflected of the effort and selflessness and sacrifices that St. Albert residents. And those within the province of Alberta have taken to with the measures necessary to assist in controlling COVID-19. We have all lived through dynamic and changing situation this last year. Seeing our initial lockdown and then the second wave of COVID-19. Measures and advice continue to change and develop based on best practice, evidence and the current situation. As we are in the midst of the downward active case trend, there are challenges we should be aware of. The COVID-19 variants, a number of COVID-19 variants have been identified throughout the world, two of which have been identified in Alberta. The variants found in Alberta are both the UK and South African variants. On January 25th, 2021, there were 20 confirmed cases of UK variant and five confirmed cases of the South African variant. On February 1st, 2021, there were 50 confirmed cases of the UK variant and seven confirmed cases of the South African variant. So in a period of one week, we have seen a doubling of cases related to the variants identified. Most of these cases have been identified as travel-related. Eight of these cases have now been identified as not travel-related. These variants are concerning as they are 30 to 50% more transmissible than the existing or original COVID-19. Which means they spread morally easily throughout the population. The variants themselves are a growing threat to Alberta's health system and population. There is concern that if these variants catch hold in the community, we may see additional growth or a third wave. Growth in COVID that is being seen in other locations and parts of the world. The variant hospitalization modeling, which you see on the screen. Shows the potential for exponential growth of COVID-19 without public health measures over a period of six weeks. Broader variant spread has been experienced in other locations like Ontario. We've seen increased international border restrictions implemented in Canada. Manitoba has implemented inter-provincial travel restrictions. The province itself is increasing quarantine requirements for close contacts of variants. And that can be up to 24, 24 days depending on situation. There are a whole bunch of measures in place that we'll go into detail, but we'll just touch shortly on. Some of the orders in place deal with gatherings, masking, business restrictions, outdoor social gatherings, personal wellness services, counselling, access to private residences. Indoor gatherings, places of worship, working from home, isolation requirements and physical distancing. The new order detailing on what is allowed in step one is not yet available. The province is developing the CMWH, the Chief Medical Officer of Health Orders this week. In many cases, we have seen orders with wording slightly different than advertised in press conference or what might currently be on, on webpages with the province. The new orders will be closely scrutinized once available. It really is important to understand that while the steps forward rely on hospitalization. This system can reverse, and it's important what can drive those changes. Hospitalization numbers are used as the foundation of the information for the steps in the Path Forward. Other leading indicators are used to assist in decisions whether to continue or reverse this trend. Those leading indicators involved in decision-making include new case numbers, so that's the daily active case count comparisons. Test positivity rate, which is the percentage of COVID-19 tests that are positive, R-values or the reproductivity rate which individuals share COVID-19. We currently are not alone in decision-making, our comparators are indicating that they are attempting to understand the measures that the province would institute. There's a real variety of thoughts amongst them. Some are indicating that they're not in a hurry to open, others are thinking about waiting to step two at the earliest. Some are indicating they would consider opening under order restrictions. In some instances, meetings like this are scheduled with their elected officials to help determine the community response. A common message that we have heard from our comparators. In the region and around the province, is there in the discussion phase and have not made final decisions on what they will do in relation to orders. With background on health measures that I have discussed with you, I will now pass the presentation to Diane.
Thank you Percy, and good morning council, so this next part of the presentation will focus on the recreation service delivery in the Path Forward. And we'll talk about specifically the recreation that we currently have in place and what we may be able to look to open in. and what we may be able to look to open in the future. So the green box on this chart reflects what is currently open or services that we are currently providing. So what this is, is really our outdoor recreation amenities, as we know, are very well-used by the communities. So our Topogon Hills, outdoor rinks, walking paths, skiing trails. Our community has really embraced our outdoor recreation and those services and facilities are open. We also have our virtual fitness programming we are also undertaking at this time. So we are being able to provide fitness programming virtually to our community. As Percy mentioned, all of our indoor recreation facilities are closed at this time and were closed as of December 13. So as the province announces easing of restrictions beginning February 8, we know that now we can look to open potentially one-on-one training and facilities to support school curriculum-related educational activities, which we'll focus on today. So what we know, so in the short few days since the restrictions have been eased and we've got information about what those guidelines may look like, we have been doing analysis and research and engagement with our community, our partners, and with others in the region. So what we know for indoor fitness is, as Percy said, is one-on-one training. So direct delivery of personal training in person could take place and could be offered at this time. Sport instruction in a one-on-one environment, one coach, one participant, could be offered at this time as well. So figure skating is currently the only sport partner who at this time has identified that their program could meet this new format. We have been chatting with the schools a bit. We have had some emails with them over the last day or so. And they have identified that they do have a desire to access public facilities specifically for sport academy program use. We still need to understand more about what the schools' needs are. We have heard from the public and the Catholic system. We have not heard from the Franciscans at this time. We do need to spend a bit more time talking with our school partners to determine and understand their need. Historically, though, our schools have used our facilities, specifically in September. They've used over 50 hours a month in their gyms, 75 hours in our fields, and 150 hours a month on our ice. So we do know that the schools have relied on our facilities heavily in the past time of the year. We have been talking with our sport partners, and again, everyone is trying to understand what these new restrictions mean and also how this step forward, this plan forward may look. So soccer has announced the cancellation of their indoor season, so they will focus on their outdoor season now. Hockey Alberta, in conjunction with its leagues, has canceled regularly play for the remainder of the 2020-2021 season. Hockey Alberta has also announced that they want to work with their members on looking at spring development season as we get into step two of the province's plan. We are still waiting for confirmation from Ringette on their season and expect to hear very soon. So as I mentioned, figure skating would like to continue their program offering with this one-on-one training format. And Skate Academy has issued guidelines to the local clubs for safe return to sport with this modified offering. In our conversations with my regional counterparts in the municipality, as Percy mentioned, everyone is still trying to understand what this all means and having conversations. What we do generally heard is it's really across the board where people are. What we've heard is in arenas, it's mixed in terms of some are taking, are looking to venture take-out ice. Others are considering opening up all their facilities for use. And considering schools, any municipality that does have a sport academy within their municipality, they are having conversations with their schools as well about access to facilities. And what we're hearing for the most part on pools is that most municipalities are looking to continue closure at this time. But again, there's still lots of conversation going on and not a lot of decisions have been made at this point. So one thing we do know that we can provide is potentially personal training. So personal training is a service that the city has offered and could be offered now based on the announcement last Friday. So before facilities closed last spring, the demand for training was strong with approximately 200 individual fitness services delivered each month. These services were brought back in mid-September when facilities reopened and was just beginning to recover with increased demand when facilities were closed again on December 13. So this service could be offered in person now based on the guidelines. However, this service can also be offered virtually without the additional facility and related costs, which is where we're leaning towards more of a virtual offering as opposed to an in-person personal training. So this next slide represents the current booking of indoor arenas. So it represents what we know to date based on the groups that we've spoken with. So we know that figure skating and schools are the two groups that are looking to have access to ice. So based on the current booking information, the skating club and academies would need about 72 hours a week or about 19% of the overall utilization of the indoor arenas, of the indoor ice across all five arenas. So the figure skating club traditionally uses about 36 hours a week on two sheets. And our schools use about 36 hours across all five sheets of ice. Historically, indoor arenas at this time of the year would bring in about 375 hours of rental per week or 1,500 hours a month. So quite significant in terms of those sport partners that are just not able to provide programming now as their seasons have been canceled. So there's a reduction in the demand for ice right now. So we did do some analysis in terms of some financial modeling around opening up our arenas. So these scenarios represent the cost provided arenas to the community. The assumptions used in building out these scenarios include that we would have a reduced operating hours in alignment with demand. And from my financial assumptions, that our estimated revenue is based on St. Alberta Figure Skating Club being a sport partner winter rate. And as per the reciprocal use agreement, there is no charge to schools for use. The direct cost for Service Place three ice sheets has been applied relatively to the other two scenarios in here for a five-sheet cost and a one-sheet cost. Direct costs include arena personnel and utilities. And facility overhead costs include janitorial, facility hosts. As our facilities would remain closed to the public, we would have to have staff on the door managing traffic coming in and out of the facility. Our utilization is based on historical utilization by schools and the skating club. So based on operating all five arenas, there's a net cost per week of about $23,000. To operate three arenas, it's about $11,800. And to operate one arena, it's supposed to a break-even basis based on these assumptions that we've shared today. So based on the current level of restrictions, there are very few users that are able to provide programming resulting in this low utilization rates compared to costs. So and in addition to offering arenas, if we were to offer dry floor plates like a gym or a field, we would look to factor in an additional $1,700 per week for offering those amenities to the public. And this next slide is one that I shared last week. It reflects the financial analysis that we did to identify the tipping point or where it would make sense to keep pools filled or not, or keep ice in or not. So based on this analysis, it costs approximately $4,400 a week or $2,300 a week to keep the pools operational, means water in, no public yet, at Landrick's Water Play Center and Fountain Park respectively. So based on this analysis, Landrick's Water Play Park has reached a threshold at which point we have resulted in fiscal saving if the pool were to be drained. However, due to the high cost of draining and filling the pool at Fountain Park, we've not reached that threshold yet. It's also important to note that from a facility reopening perspective, if the pool water remains in, we could be operational. And once restrictions ease and we are able to, we could be operational within seven to 10 days with our pool. If we drain pools, it's more like 15 days to bring them back to operational ability. So when we look at ice, and again, this is based on a cost of approximately $9,600 a week to keep the three ice surfaces in at Service Place. So if ice is removed, the subsequent reinstallation would take approximately seven days to remove and 14 days to reinstall. So based on this analysis, the indoor arenas have reached the threshold at which it would result in financial savings if the ice was to be removed if it was not used. And just a general note, if the ice remains in, typically, we could have the ice ready for the public within five to seven days. However, based on the scenario we are in right now, additional time we would need to determine the needs of the groups. We're still trying to understand what our schools and our sport partners may need, as well as understanding provincial guidelines, and then having more conversations with our groups to make sure that we can allocate the ice to their needs. So that's the end of the recreation-specific information. I'll turn it back to Percy for conclusion and recommendation.
The following really are the administration's recommendations. First, that COVID-19 matters. Updates and discussion agenda report and the accompanying PowerPoint presented today at council be received as information. Secondly, that the CAO be authorized to reopen facilities under modified services and service levels to comply with provincial health orders and guidelines when the CAO deems it feasible to do so in consideration of public demand for facilities and financial viability, provided that the CAO shall first cause fitness services to be offered virtually and as soon as operationally practicable, cause the ice to be removed from two arenas and the water to be drained from the Landrick's Water Play Center. We are happy to receive any questions you have at this time.
Great. Thank you, guys. Can you maybe unshare the screen? Thanks. Perfect. All right. I have quite a few questions because you went kind of fast, Diane. Just kind of, I'll get to you right away, Jackie, as I say, hang up, but I won't go into all my questions, but you said something about, how much do we get per month to rent out the ice? In a normal year?
So in a normal year, if we were using the same state of time of February, we would normally receive about $40,000 a week in arena revenue.
Okay, per week.
Per week.
Okay, and then, so is that generating a profit? Is it, because it's not costing us $40,000 a week to run the rinks, is it?
So the costs that I've shared today is the direct costs to deliver just that one portion of facility. There are other facility costs that come into play such as snow removal, insurance, other kinds of variable costs that haven't been factored into this analysis today.
Okay, so would it be fair to say that we, and I'm just thinking ice right now, and that's the five rigs that we operate them at a slight deficit, that taxpayers are subsidizing in a normal February?
So when we look at our facilities, of course, there is some tax support to our recreation facilities. However, I would say that our ice arenas, when they are maximized in terms of utilization, there is good revenue return on that and the cost recovery is quite high compared to other months when we actually are running dry floor, which recovers less cost recovery or when there's less utilization in facilities.
Okay, and so since you were proposing taking, you said, take the ice off of two rinks. I'm assuming that means Kinex and Jerome McKinlay?
We're still determining which would be the best arenas to take the ice out of. It's based on continual conversation with the sport partners and the schools. There is an economy of taking out the ice at Kinex as it is a separate standalone facility. However, if the schools are looking to use other facilities, if the school, if the school is using other facilities like fields and gyms, it would make sense to have all of that over at Service Place.
Okay, and no consideration about the Arden because, and this is not for you, Diane, I think it's more for Kevin or Percy, you could open it up to performance for schools. And I know the high schools use the Arden a lot for their plays. Was that part of the conversation?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, all right, I'm going to open it up to council because I have so many questions, like tons. I will tell everyone that's listening, I did have a mid-sized mayor call yesterday and I asked the question. Laduka seeming is going to open up their pool and their rinks right away, at least two sheets of ice. Red Deer is closing their rinks and their pools and their gyms. Beaumont is going to have one sheet of ice. And Fort Saskatchewan will likely not open their pool and maybe one sheet of ice. That was kind of what I looked. Okay, Jackie, go ahead.
Thanks. Thanks for the presentation. So I'm trying to wrap my head around the orders, which I know you haven't seen for real yet. But it seems to me that the province is trying to take fitness and reduce it to a one-on-one situation so that transmission is low. Hockey in and of itself sort of doesn't lend itself to that kind of bubble. So even if we were to let the hockey academies in to use the ice rink, isn't it sort of essentially going against what we're trying to do on a one-on-one fitness level? Like, I understand that figure skating can be done this way, but hockey is a little bit different. That's one question. So I'm just trying to wrap myself around that. The other question I have is, Diane, are any of the hockey academies using our outdoor facilities in the school, within the school hours, the hockey rinks themselves as an option to, probably a very inexpensive option to get their kids out? So I'll start with those two. I've got all kinds of questions, but I'll start with those two.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Hanson. I'll start with the first one on what we know with our sports schools using our outdoor amenities. So in our initial conversations with public and Catholic school boards, we do understand that their sport academies are continuing and are using our outdoor spaces. So outdoor rinks and, you know, trails and all kinds of spaces, and trying to utilize whatever they have within their own facilities, their own schools. So that's what we know to date. And when you talk about the hockey and the, I guess, the province is not allowing team sports to continue. However, you know, they have allowed schools to access affiliated facilities. And so we were in a town hall this week with the province. And what we understood from the spirit or the intent of the orders is that there were many rural schools who didn't have access to gymnasiums within their schools. And so they were trying to give them access to other community facilities so that they could continue to hold their curriculum-based phys ed classes. So because though this order has expanded beyond, like for schools to use these facilities, this is where the conversation is occurring with regard to access for sport academies and other uses. And you're right, it's very different hockey team use, but the schools are coming in as a cohort, whereas figure skating would come in very structured as a one-on-one training. So one instructor, one participant, they're not allowed to cycle through. And they're only allowed, so once the instruction is complete, the participant is to leave. And then the coach would then move on to the next participant. So you're right, very structured, very one-on-one.
Okay, thanks. In terms of the pools and draining the pools, you always do an annual cleanup. And I mean, could you move it up in the calendar year if we were going to just drain it now and just sort of do the cleanup? And then when things, when the coast is clear, we fill it up and get going again. Is that an option for us?
Yes, a good question, Councilor Hanson. It was one we chatted about last week briefly. So what we've said is if we leave the water in Fountain Park, we'd be responsive to when restrictions ease and potentially we could go back to having lane swimming or reservation-specific public swim. So with this year being closed as we have been, Fountain Park, once opened, we would not shut it down for another shutdown or annual maintenance. We'd be ready to carry through for the full season of operation. With Service Place, we have had over the last two years, we've been planning for a significant shutdown, three months. Right now, it's planned from the end of May till August. As Service Place is 15 years old, we're looking at HVAC, we're looking at roof, we're looking at our filtration systems. We have been working on, we have a contractor in place who will be doing this work over those months. And so to move that up right now is challenging in that we're waiting for equipment to be delivered. And the whole project is based around that sort of May to August timeframe when we felt it would have less impact on the community because they could be using the outdoor aquatics facilities. However, we have been chatting with the contractor and with our CPO office, and we could potentially move that up maybe two to four weeks, so beginning of May. But if we drain the pool now, Service Place, the thought around that was that we don't anticipate they'll be opening up our recreation facilities for spontaneous drop-in use anytime too soon. And so if we drain the pool at Service Place, we'll be able to save a little bit of money. And we can also then prepare for the shutdown that would happen. And it would be, we could have continuous service at Fountain Park, and then we could do the work we need to do at Service Place.
Thank you. And the last question I have was, you know, I'm assuming when Hockey Alberta councils hockey, that means St. Albert Minor Hockey has counseled hockey. Would that, is that right?
Correct.
It's all the same, right?
Yes.
I guess my question would be, you know, how do they, how does? I guess my question would be, you know, how do they, how does? St. Albert Minor Hockey feel about? Hockey academies carrying on inside a a. A rink that's costing money to keep open when they can't use it and. And I I just feel like that's kind of, that's a hard question to answer, Diane, but it's something that has come to my mind is. You know, what is fair and what is not fair and and it, we're all kind of suffering personally around what we can and cannot do. I sort of anticipate there might be a little bit of an outcry if there's a special group of kids that get to use it. Well. The general public does not. And I don't know if that's happened in your conversations or whether you care to comment, but are you hearing a little bit of that?
Oh, we haven't had those conversations specifically with Minor Hockey. I know they're just trying to figure out, they're just heard that their. Their season was canceled and they're trying to figure out, could they do any one-on-one specific training, those kinds of things? So we haven't had those conversations with them, but I think your point is very valid in that, you know, our community as a whole. What's acceptable to which groups and how they access our facilities to be equitable. Is definitely, I'm sure, a conversation that's being had.
Okay, that's all for now. Thanks.
All right, I think I had Natalie next and then Ray, then Wes.
Thank you. So the recommendations, it looks like, i- is to keep three sheets of ice open. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
So Council Jolly, what we're looking at right now is if we take two ice surfaces out, we we know probably five ice surfaces is is. We'll definitely definitely not have the demand for that. So our point is right now is that we keep three open to evaluate what the need is and the demand. And then if the demand is not there, we could then remove additional ice surfaces as we understand more about the.
So so kind of the numbers that you provided, the the six hundred kind of loss for the one sheet compared to eleven thousand, I think, for three.
Right.
We don't think those numbers are accurate or?
Yes, we do. I guess where the difference lies in that is that when we only have one sheet of ice, we're just looking at the revenue from. We only have revenue from St. Albert Skating Club, so that's where it's kind of a break even. Just operate one ice rink with some revenue coming in. But when you operate three ice rinks with only revenue coming from the skating club and not any. There's no cost to the schools through our joint use agreement, so there's no cost to, I guess, offset, there's no revenue to offset the cost of the other two rooms.
So, so really, I mean, if, say, if schools were were paying, just to kind of compare numbers to numbers. That means that the, if we had three rinks. I guess the utilization numbers are in there. It's quite, it seems to be quite a bit lower for three sheets, even with the schools. I I don't remember that slide, but it was something like twenty percent compared to to fifty or something like that?
So for one sheet of ice, it's about six hundred dollars. For three sheets of ice, it's eleven thousand eight hundred. And that again is because it's only, we're using it currently based on what we know. Thirty-seven hours a week of schools and thirty-seven hours a week of bigger skating club, skating club. And then five sheets of ice is twenty-three thousand. And again, it's because it's the compound cost without the offset of the revenue.
Sorry, I'm looking more at utilization.
Well, I think Kevin really must add something to this and then we'll go in. Yeah, Kevin?
Just a, thank you, Madam Chair, just a supplementary comment. So. The third, the third rink, leaving it open is a bit of a, it's a bit of a hedge one way or the other. And I was going to suggest to council, we did put this report together quickly and perhaps the recommendation. If adopted would be that the C A O be permitted to open and close. So where we were coming from with the third rink is that it it's it's a bit of a hedge and it's a bit of a swing ice, so. If the demand is not there, we could close it down. Conversely, it, as Diane mentioned, it takes us about five to seven days to get a rink going. If if step two comes and there's more opportunity for more participants to use ice, we've got a third sheet ready to go, right? So it'd be a matter of three to four weeks when step two could come in and then. We don't find, we we have three of our five rinks up and it may permit groups such as minor hockey if they're permitted under regulations to come out and do some spring. Program sort of thing. So it's, it's a little bit of a gamble. It's a little bit of a hedge, that third rink and. I I would suggest that perhaps we may want to amend the recommendation to open and close. Because likewise, if the demand's not there or step two is not reached, we can then shut the third rink down to save one.
Thank you. I like that that recommendation.
Honestly.
Okay, that's good. And I get my my last question kind of relates to that, but. So in terms of demand, are we confident that kind of schools and and figure skating groups can kind of a- adjust? Their schedules to accommodate the the reduced number of sheets? Is is that an issue at all?
So it's still, we're still in conversations with those groups to try and understand. So what we do know though is that if the sport academies wanted to operate the way they had normally operated. They do need five ice surfaces because they all come, they come at the same time. The hours that they're utilized. Are based around their school and their educational curriculum. So we know though that they are looking to try and operate similar to how they would operate it last year with their sport academies. And with bigger skating, again, we're we're in early stages of conversation, but they have identified that they would like to. To do this one-on-one training and in terms of the number of hours, that's what we're still trying to pin down with everyone.
Okay, thank you. I guess it'll be interesting to see what kind of flexibility they have because like a lot of these students are not in. Extracurriculars like they were, you know, this time last year. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, I think I've got Ray next.
Okay, my my questions were around firstly, the like the cost chart you had. You went through that really quick. And I didn't really understand that in the weeks to break even and that. Maybe you could just kind of go over that chart again. And explain to us, explain to the chart just a little bit slower about how the costs were.
Sure. Council Watkins, are you looking at the having ice in or ice out chart or the one about the revenue and the utilization?
Even the one that had kind of like break even eight weeks.
So again, the assumptions that we use based on not having. We're still trying to work with the the sport partners and the schools to understand their needs. So we we base it on some assumptions. So we base it on a reduced operating cost as on hours of operation. Because again, the building would not be open to the public, it would just be for its very specific uses. We base it on knowing what we know. So we know that seventy-two hours a week is what is needed from sport academies. And figure skating historic use. We base it on bigger skating, currently paying the regular sport partner ice rates. And because of the reciprocal use agreement of the sport academies, there's no cost to the sport academies to utilize facilities. So when we look at the cost to revenue, it's about if we have one ice rink in and try to accommodate seventy-two hours on that one ring. We'd break even, about break even. If we don't operate three ice rinks, still again with the seventy-two hours of utilization. It would cost us about eleven thousand eight hundred dollars a week to operate three arenas. Based on, again, only seventy-two hours of operation and only based on the revenue from figure skating club. If we were to operate five ice rinks, again, with the same utilization, seventy-two hours, it's about twenty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, so so the recommendation is close two. Keep three open, three is a swing. The three that are open will be used for figure skating and sport academy. That's it?
At this time, if some of the other, like ring editors or hockey. Can adapt their program within the guidelines and be able to provide and are interested. In providing sort of a more of a one-on-one development program, then. That may be an opportunity for some ice, but again, the groups are not some. Not sure where they where they're going with their programs based on just having this information last week. And trying to figure out how their programs may align to the current guidelines.
Okay, so so eleven thousand eight hundred a week for seventy-two hours of. Of users. Right, okay, and then. I guess the the benefit of getting the ice out is we can notify lacrosse and lacrosse can get in there sooner. This is a benefit to them, I guess, at one point.
Yes, so we have been working with our spring sports as well, so lacrosse, ball hockey. Traditionally, we would keep two ice surfaces in all year and have three dry floor. And again, it will depend on if team sports can continue or can or the restrictions ease and and they will allow team sports. Right now, lacrosse season wouldn't be able to go based on the restrictions that we are at at step one right now.
Okay, and the personal trainers at service, so so the gym at service will be opened. With a personal trainer only, so if you hire a personal trainer, then you'll be able to train at service?
So our recommendation is to not actually open the gym because the province is not allowing spontaneous or drop-in use. Of the gym or pools, so we would do virtual personal training. So if someone wanted a trainer, it would be virtual. Live through Zoom into your home.
Okay, I thought I'm I'm misunderstood then. I thought that was you were going to personally train people at service. Because isn't that what the government is going to allow you to have personal trainers in a gym?
Correct, so we could have personal training at Service Place. However, the overhead costs, it's such a large facility, the overhead costs to do one-on-one training for to bring ten people into that space to do a one-on-one. Personal training, it would just financially be more viable to do that virtually as opposed to bringing them into the facility and. Having all the additional overhead costs.
Understandable. Okay, and and oh yeah, just on the spontaneous use there, when you made a comment, you said it won't be a while before there's spontaneous use there. And when there was spontaneous use there, I don't think there were any cases of COVID that were linked to Service Place. And I was going there all the time and they were doing a really good job of wiping down everything. So what did you say the prospects are? You thought the timing of. Was of spontaneous use at the facility?
Well, I can start out. Percy, do you want to jump in on that is?
Provincial decision, isn't it?
Yeah, provincial decision and we are not sure of the guidelines around step two, three and four. They haven't given enough detail for us to understand exactly when that service would be able to be implemented back into our facilities.
Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Add into the, into there with the with the orders, like we don't have the orders in front of us. We've got, we've got a framework that they've they've advertised, they've put on the website. And the facilities look to be kind of towards stage four and opening those facilities. Right now, even with what we would be doing with the facility and bringing people in for one-on-one. The facility would remain closed and we essentially, we would have a door monitor that would be there to ensure. That individuals have a have a one-on-one session in there, so it's it's a very controlled situation. It's not, it it's not, the doors are open at Service Place either.
I don't know how one-on-one training is going to work for the. For the fitness industry unless you have a really, really small business, you know. But for any fitness center of any size, I don't see how that's going to work. And you know, the real problem with all this is that. There are so many questions that are being asked about what's what's going to happen and how we move forward. And there are so little answers and so much confusion. It seems to be in what's what's happening and and everybody's unsure. You know, every answer we get about the stage going forward is we're not too sure about what's happening, but it's going to happen in a different phase. So I can, I can censor, I can, I can sense everybody's frustration and it's getting really difficult to keep trying to answer these questions from the public.
Okay, I think I've got Wes, then Ken.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues. I think you've touched base on on pretty much my questions as well. And particularly that last one. So if we could focus basically on the ice use and the pool use. Potentially, if all things go well, we're sort of three weeks, three and a half weeks away from. Perhaps step two. What sort of additional, if in fact you have this information? What extra sort of service would be required of us or asked of us? Three weeks from now, that may in fact influence our decisions today to keep something open.
Percy, do you want me to take that one? And you can, I'll start and you can jump in. So what we know from step two and in terms of recreation pools and arenas. Is all they have said is that further easing of indoor fitness and children's sport and performance would be step two. There's no detail to what that means, so there's no additional guidelines, there's no orders yet on anything except two. So we don't have a lot of detail at all of what that would look like. So at this point. We're sort of going based on when the province updates their guidelines and provide more information. So we don't have a lot of information at this point in terms of what that would look like. Percy, do you have any more detail on that?
In reality, I think Diane said it very, very truthfully, the even the provinces is not. Is not quite clear where they, those different points of transition will be. It's, a lot of it's based on going back to looking at what the trends are. And even restrictions may be, maybe, maybe different as they as they come through. You may see part of the 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 opening measures occurring, maybe, maybe a component of of what they're. What they're saying at that. And it really, it depends on what's occurring at the time with hospitalizations. The the R factor, the the active case rates and the reproductivity rate at that, at that time.
Yeah, fair enough. And and so, and to the point that Council Watkins make is pretty frustrating. To to enter into a conversation about effectively keeping. You know, facilities open without understanding what sort of three weeks down the road might look like. But this is all based on sort of our current restrictions and the impact of of. You know, being locked down and mask wearing and social distancing and all of the rest. And we've bent the curve based on those sorts of activities. Given what you know in other countries that have rolled out the vaccine. Because as we start to vaccinate our population, hopefully. The the bend in the curve will will be reactive to that even more so than the social distancing and all the other lockdown measures. Have you any intel intelligence around what's happened in countries like Israel or? Or other places where large components of their. Population have been vaccinated to understand that that actually works. And that the and that the the curve is down to where we can count and it's perhaps stage four here in the next six months or so.
The the data is kind of in that, in the preliminary stage and they're they're learning from the situations like those in Israel. There's been some real kind of positive announcements in the media that you you may have seen. That there's been reductions of 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 COVID, of COVID cases in those. Above sixty, sixty years old and since vaccination. But the the data is in kind of in that preliminary stage and is it replicable in in other other locations? That's, that's kind of the information that we're hearing from from health. The the information that we're also hearing is is those additional measures. Like hand washing, working from home, masking and in that are are. And physical distancing will still need to be, will still need to be in place for for a while, even during. Even during vaccination and while significant portions of population is is vaccinated. Because they don't have a lot, all the, all the clear pieces of of research on whether. The vaccines themselves will shed, if a person who's had the vaccine. Can still shed the shed the virus itself. So those pieces are that we've heard from health are are pieces they have to do more research on. And this, this is because the vaccine itself has been developed in such a quick format format. And bringing it out to the public in in kind of record time. So they haven't had the opportunity to do those studies that what they would typically do in. In the kind of a development phase that would be up to five to seven years.
Well, fair enough. All I know is that the the community is suffering from COVID fatigue. And and you know, people are just. They need some hope out there somehow. And so, you know, continual messages of. Fear, I guess, if you will, because now it's not COVID nineteen, the fear is around the variants of COVID nineteen and oh my God, what's going to happen next? So I'm just trying to figure out if there are messages of hope here somewhere. The idea now that we bent the curve. Uh the idea now that we bent the curve um in in people, kids want to get out there and and start to play. They want to, whether it's a a a sports uh academy. But if we if we close it down and say you can't do that, that is just another thing that says, you know, um lockdown. And uh and so my my hope is is that as we go forward, even those little measures that we can s- offer to our community to give them some uh semblance of of returning to a uh uh of a more engaged society, it it will be helpful. And I think for me, uh spending a little money in order to allow that to happen might be money well spent, so. But I appreciated the uh the amendment that was proposed by uh the city manager. I think that's helpful. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sure. Counselor McKay.
Uh thanks. Most of my uh questions have been uh asked and uh answers given, so I'll be quick. Uh I just need to confirm again, Diane, what would be the proposed hours of operation of uh of whatever facilities we decide to keep open?
So currently, what we know um is we look for an operating between eight AM and eight PM that would cover off school use and um some of the skating academies use. And again, we need to work with those groups to determine uh what uh what the utilization would look like, what the allocation would look like. And it it may go to nine o'clock if that works better for you know, our our user groups, but we would definitely modify it. It wouldn't be a five thirty AM to a midnight, which is what our current offering or what our previous offering was for.
When the um arenas were open prior to uh November twenty-fourth or whenever that timeframe was, or I guess prior to Christmas. Um we didn't allow access into the change rooms or anything. I mean, basically, sports academies would have to arrive kind of fully dressed, put their skates on and then get out. So I mean, that would save some costs, right? Or would we actually open up a couple of the locker rooms?
So when we first opened, everyone came dressed. And then um as restrictions eased, we were allowing groups to use dressing rooms as cohorts. Uh because that was allowed through the province. Um so at this point, they haven't um provided any direction on that. If we are opening our arenas again, how would we be allowed to use the locker room? So we do have a lot of questions that we still need to ask the province for clarity.
Yeah, and I I appreciate the challenge um Percy and and you guys have around that. Because these orders, yeah, they get announced, but then the act- the actual printed orders don't arrive until the day of. And then that causes more confusion. Um the you know, some of the feedback we're getting in is there's an opportunity for, and I'll use the word significant, I mean, this is the word that was written to us. Significant cost recovery in terms of one-on-one ice sessions. I don't see from what you've said to me that there's significant cost recovery opportunities, is there?
It I would depend on demand. So um right now, we know figure skating can adapt their program that way, but our other sport partners, hockey, ringette. Uh they haven't evaluated their programs or provided us with uh any feedback on how they might adapt their programs to be able to work within these restrictions.
Yeah, I mean, because I would take one-on-one to be hockey coach and one student. And then how would you figure that in? So I mean, I guess it's doable though, but then what would be the rate? Um and just um um Madam Mayor, you identified in your mid-sized mayor conversation, some of the communities, surrounding communities that are looking at shutting down. And I mean, Red Deer is a little far away. Do you, would there be an opportunity for other sports academies and other communities to access ours if that was an option?
Uh right now, through our reciprocal use agreement with the schools, it is um uh limited to our summer public, Santa Catholic and our Francophone schools for use of community schools or use of public facilities. So at this point, we don't entertain outside sport academies. However, that is something that potentially we could be could be looked at.
Yeah, I was just thinking there might be an opportunity that a uh outside sport academy would access our community uh if they couldn't get appropriate ice time and we had available ice time and then we could actually look at cost recovery. I'm not sure, but it might be an opportunity, but I still don't see it as significant. Um I think that's all my question. Although I do support um Counselor Broadhead's last couple of comments, that there is certainly a mental health component in relation to this. And I know that uh I was going through the drive-through for coffee the other day and that was one of the questions that the they said, please open up one or keep one arena open because my uh the kids, the kids need the activity. Um and I I think and I take your point, Counselor Hanson, I think that the outdoor opportunities, but have you looked at the weather forecast for the next couple of days? It's uh minus minus thirty-five, so uh back to pond hockey, I guess, in the old days. Anyways, that's my uh questions.
All right, I still have a couple. Um and it can, Council McKay had a really good point about revenue opportunities. I did not realize that our reciprocal use agreement would um essentially not allow other community schools to use that. So I think that's a conversation we have to take back to the school boards. Um if we're if we're opening for them, um uh this kind of significant cost, I think they need to be a little bit more flexible. I think what people don't understand is we have this reciprocal use agreement that allows uh the schools into our facilities and us into theirs. But we, that is not being reciprocated right now. We are not allowed into the schools. Is that correct?
So currently, the community use of uh schools is um not being allowed right now. You're yes, correct.
Probably a per- a provincial decision, not the schools. But I think there's there's needs to be some flexibility in this reciprocal use to allow the city to try to recover some costs. But the other revenue opportunity I was thinking was spring camps. If uh if other communities like Fort Saskatchewan is taking their ice right off and they have none and you know, we're in step three and they're allowing summer, spring camps, that's it. That's a good revenue opportunity for us, potentially. Yeah.
Yes, our spring ice has always been a good revenue generator. Again, it will depend on what restrictions, how the restrictions are laid out and whether or not um our camps and and programs can adapt to the one-on-one uh training that we currently have in place.
My other big concern is um if they announce a spring league or even a summer league because hockey got canceled all winter, they might want to push it into the warmer months. Um we would need all five rinks for that, but that would push out. How many do we use for lacrosse?
So we currently keep two ice surfaces in twelve months a year and the other three go to dry floor. And that is really based on the demand that we had had previously. So if hockey was changing, moving their their season, um we would have to look to uh find a balance between ice and dry floor to accommodate as best we could uh all sport partners needs.
So you've said you've been talking to the school boards. Um have has the conversation come up about altering their their routines to maybe do early morning ice? You said eight, but they could come at seven, they could go after school. So we're getting a higher percent utilization on one rake. Is it has that conversation happened?
So um we've only received emails, conversation right now. We're just trying to gather information. So we've asked all the school districts the same questions. Would you want to resume your um sport academies or school use? So we're gathering the information right now and I've not had you know, good, healthy conversations with them yet about any flexibility.
Okay.
Right now, what they're all saying is, you know, they like to operate the way they had in the past with the same allocation and the same utilization in the same times. But that doesn't mean that they, you know, wouldn't be open to the conversation around being flexible um with that as well.
So in the past, would they have been using all five rigs?
They would have been, yes.
Yeah, so they're not gonna be operating, just saying it right now, they're not gonna be operating the best. So whatever decision council makes, I'll get you right away, Percy. Um today they'll have to adapt and then they might adapt by extending their hours or something like that. Percy, did you want to jump in on that?
Yeah, I did want to jump in on that. There uh there may be some restrictions around school hours associated with that that the the schools might not be able to operate outside their school, uh standard school hours.
Okay, again, everybody needs to try to be flexible and maybe work on that. And the the other option I keep thinking is if they really want another rank, we can offer two for free and then we can actually ask them to start paying. Because this is unknown circumstances and if they they can they can rent out a a rank and pay for the operating costs and maybe maybe allow for more, but I I'm I'm fine with the two and then the one for figure skating or however you work it out. Um you probably don't know the answer to this, but what I imagine one-on-one figure skating, is it one coach and one skater? Or can we divide the rank into three and have three coaches and three skaters in a certain boundary?
Right. So based on um the guidelines that have come out from Skate Canada, they're identifying one coach, one in uh participant. But you could potentially put eight um units on the ice rink at one time.
Okay.
So eight coaches, eight participants, and then a new group.
That makes it a little bit more affordable for them, I think. Okay, um and the pool, so we're gonna drain Landrucks, but we're gonna keep the water in Fountain Park.
That would be our recommendation, yes.
And are we doing one-on-one lessons at Fountain Park?
So we haven't, yeah, we haven't done the analysis on the aquatics piece. Um we haven't had any requests at this point for um s- uh swim clubs to do one-on-one training. Uh we have had a few calls from public that would love to get in for lane swim, but that's not the intent right now. It would have to be one-on-one instruction. Uh we are looking at if um we could do one-on-one swim lessons, what the demand might be because in Fountain Park, um there is quite a bit of space there. Uh potentially, we could offer some one-on-one swim lessons.
Okay, good. And then you're not proposing using the two soccer fields or the gymnasium surface or one-on-one skills for soccer or whatever?
So what we know now is the um schools would like to use uh fields or gyms for sport academy use. So and we've identified spend another seventeen hundred dollars a week to keep each four, each of those four plates um operational or specific one-on-one training. Now, we haven't heard from soccer or any other groups if they're interested in in renting space for that. But those are the conversations that we're having with all of our sport partners over the coming days.
That's what makes sense to me to keep the the three rinks at service because then you do have staff there, you've got the building heated. And then if they do want to pop in, it's probably no cost really and maybe a bit of a profit. And then what about the um the food partners that we have in service place? Can they open up Starbucks? Booster juice and even um the restaurant.
So I'll start and then Percy, you can jump in with uh the regulations. So from an operational perspective, what we understand from our our retail partners and our food and beverage is really their uh their sales are based on uh volume and traffic in the facility. And so until we can open our facility for spontaneous drop-in, uh it's not really financially viable for those or for those restaurants to open. However, um it would also be based on the guidelines. Percy, do you want to speak to that?
Okay.
Yes, and and really on this path path forward, step four, where hospitalizations are less than one fifty is where they have it plotted right now that inter- indoor entertainment centers and play centers uh can can open. So that's kind of where we're we're seeing some of those those that like that uh facility being open. So uh they're not likely to have um much in terms of traffic. And it would be that kind of that door monitor uh allowing in for for scheduled uh scheduled sessions and that sort of thing up until that point in time.
So they can open, but they might not because of low volume and so that would be their decision. Just trying to drive traffic in there to support those businesses. All right, and last question I have, because I I feel like I I know what's gonna happen with the vote, but Diane, can you have the ice ready on Monday? February eighth is when they're allowed and you said five to seven days and it's four days wait.
So we can have the right ice ready on Monday. So it'll be five to seven days based on the decision uh to open up. Because right now, we're running our uh facilities with operational efficiencies, so we, you know, um we're not maintaining to them to a public use standard at this point. So we would need five to seven days. We also need to recall staff. Right now, our arena operators are outside. We're taking care of our outdoor rinks, so we need to work to bring our um staff inside. We also need to affirm and confirm um what the uh sport partners and schools may need and then look at allocation schedules and all of that. So that all has to work out as well.
Okay. Uh and our
Sorry, Mayor, just to just a point on that, like if we're pulling our arena operators back in, I just wanna make the statement that our, you know, we're not gonna be providing quite the same service that we have been on the door rings that we're bringing on.
Okay.
Operator.
It's good to point out. Um I see both uh Jackie and Sheena have your hands up. Um and maybe this question can be answered immediately, but maybe by the time the motion gets put on the floor, there's no financial implications listed in the recommendation, but there is financial implication. So can we get even a ballpark figure of what this is gonna cost? With the with the three rigs open and service place or fountain park full and that and Landrucks play park drained. So I don't know, finance can do that or and maybe I'll give you a minute, but I think we need to know exactly what that's gonna cost us. Okay, um I don't know which one went first, but I'll go with Sheena then Jackie.
Um, thank you. Um so uh Diane, what is the date that you're expecting or hopefully with a range of dates for when you can open it up? Because I know the mayor just asked, um can you do it in five days? He said, no, but what can you do within then? Wednesday. Yeah.
So yeah. So over like again, if there was a decision today to open up our arenas um for use, we would need um at least till the tw- uh probably the fifteenth uh to be able to um get our allocation in order, make sure we are maximizing the utilization on our ice surfaces, uh get our ice up and ready for public use and bring our staff back into the facilities.
Okay, so when it's
And ensure that we have janitorial staff who will be doing the regular cleaning, ensuring that we have uh staff to monitor doors. So we do have some operational pieces to uh in the place as well.
So what I'm thinking is like, as soon as we do this, we are now quasi-operational, I guess, I'm thinking, like service place is now in use. So you have the janitorial, you have all that as you mentioned. Um and so I just think about what Counselor Watkins said about the one-on-one with the gyms. If we're already open anyway and the gyms really are not as intensive, for example, as the arenas. Um can you just explain why we're not allowing just the gyms to open on one-on-one then? Um I'd be able to be very, very limited, but um I just don't like if if the if the buildings can be open anyway, why are we not actually allowing access to that facility as well?
So I guess what we were trying to present today was just a snapshot of arena operation based on what we've heard demand from. So we put from schools and skating that they would like some ice. We just tried to show you a snapshot of what the cost would be for that and what the impacts and and how we could potentially be able to offer that. So we have the one and um I mentioned it, but I didn't have a slide for it. Is that we could open up the fields and the gyms about seventeen hundred dollars a week um to operate each of those uh four plates as well. So if there was demand um for use of those spaces for one-on-one training or or for schools um having their uh phys ed classes or sport academy use, then we could open up those facilities as well.
Um I guess the other thing I'm wondering is, like you say, it's based on demand, but if nobody thinks it's actually an option, they're not gonna ask for it. I guess. So it's kind of like this catch twenty-two where it's like, well, if you ask, and we have enough ask, we'll do it, but we're actually not asking people if they would do it. So are we putting that out there at all, that once we have sufficient demand that we will look into this or not?
Yes, absolutely. So we are in conversations with our sport partners uh to help to understand if they can do one-on-one uh training um within the facilities and if they could, what what would they need? Uh how many hours would they like? What facilities would they need? Uh so we are just uh they're all just trying to figure out what the guidelines mean and how that might impact uh their programming. So we are in conversations with our sport partners for that. Again, if we are opening up those floor plates, it again has to be very specific. The the one-on-one training has to be a certified coach, so it we can't just open up too unfortunately a family to come in and you know, one-on-one basketball or one-on-one badminton. It has to be very specific to sport training and um very structured. So again, the facility would be posed to the public and open only for these specific one-on-one training uh booked times.
Well, and I'm thinking of not necessarily the um the fields, but the actual um gym, like not the gym, the workout facility. Um you know, so because it says indoor fitness with a trainer, so um that's outside of schools.
Correct, so.
Well, I'm like, but is that also being explored? I realize everything is right now, I I feel bad for you guys because everything is constantly in limbo and you're trying to juggle fifteen balls in the air, often with no warning whatsoever. Things changing on a dime and trying to read interpretations of what can be done, so you are interpreting it correctly and not getting um getting something that's been misstated. So um but has there been discussion about potentially allowing the put the trainers to come in? I realize we want one, but because the building is gonna be open and you're gonna have somebody at the door anyway, right? If we've got those all those fixed costs anyway, has there been discussion about putting the trainers in with the uh service place?
So thank you for that, Counselor Hughes. And you are right, we would love for that facility to be able to be open and filled with people, over one point five million visitors a year or um what we would see at service place. So yes, it is hard to um have to have so many restrictions in place, but we do have to follow the rules. So in terms of the fitness center, what we're proposing is that we can do the one-on-one personal training, which we are looking to add back into our service delivery. So in terms of the fitness center, what we're proposing is that we can do the one-on-one personal training, which we are looking to add back into our service delivery. However, um, we are proposing that it be virtual, so we would have a fitness or a personal trainer at Service Place who'd be videoed on Zoom and could go into people's homes and provide personal training. There's additional overhead costs to open up the fitness center and bring one-on-one training into the facility considering that we can't have just spontaneous use. People just can't go in and use the equipment, uh so it would have to be very structured. Um, probably no more than, you know, ten people at a time could have access uh to the fitness center for one-on-one training. There'd be additional costs in terms of janitorial cleaning and, and staffing. So at this point, we felt if we started uh with virtual, one-on-one personal training, then we would see what the demand is and uh as the restrictions ease, yes, then we could probably um bring that back into the fitness facility.
I, I just think that they're probably already doing virtual training, like people who are personal trainers who have clients are already doing that. One of the limitations is just you don't have the equipment. So, I mean, you can virtual train me all you want for a bench press, but um I'm doing it imaginary if I do it in my home. Um, so that's where I'm trying to figure out is for people who actually wanna use the equipment. Um, I guess I'm just asking, I realize that everything, like I said, I realize everything's in flux, but I just wanna know if there's a discussions about potentially having it open because that, that a lot, that is allowed and the building is being opened. And if there's only ten people using it, like the, per the item, if the cost, have you done the cost analysis on that? If we had potentially ten open people using it, wanna jump in?
I guess my comment would be, thank you, Madam Chair. My comment would be that administration doesn't feel the economics are there to open for the personal training. It can be done uh under the restrictions, but administration is recommending it not be done because of the economics. But that is the purview of council. If it was the will of council to open that up uh to one-on-one personal training, um given the associate recognizing the associated financial impacts, that is certainly something that would be
Like, I, I, I don't know if it could be an IR or, or just, I don't, I don't want this to be a thirty delay, it was just a little bit. Uh, we don't have the numbers to know whether or not it's economically something that we would have an appetite for. So I'm wondering if it's possible, cuz you know, you guys aren't busy or anything, but, and I'm totally sarcastically. Um, is to go back and find out like whether or not there is actually a demand for this, um, like how much of a demand we have? Cuz with the sports academies, it's one talk, you can talk to one area versus you have to both talk to the personal trainers and see what their demand would be that are currently running and then see if it, what the numbers would be, whether or not would be, what the cost recovery be on this, cuz we're taking a loss on the arenas as well. So I guess the question is, how much are we taking a loss if we were to do it on the fitness trainer?
Not sure if Diane can, sorry, I'm not sure if Diane can crunch the numbers on the spot here.
No, no, no.
Take it as an IR, but an accelerated IR, I guess.
Sure, yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking for this right now. I'm just asking if potentially we could just look into that. Um, the other thing, um, let me just, I think, I think the mayor answered a bunch of the questions I want. Oh, um, again, when it says indoor fitness, are we, I know you haven't got the orders, but the indoor fitness is, is it being interpreted as just those fitness gyms? Because I'm wondering, is it possible for individuals to rent the ice and pay the full two hundred and fifty dollars an hour? But rent it with a coach or trainer and say that they're doing it and it's not part of an official school? Is indoor fitness being interpreted right now as just the fitness centers?
So indoor fitness is being interpreted as one-on-one training, so not necessarily in the fitness centers, but on ice or fields. And uh it has to be a certified trainer, so um it has to be someone who has a designation. Uh, so whether you have, you know, your hockey level one or you're a certified uh skating instructor, you have to have a designated um trainer with a one-person instruction. So if um, uh, like if hockey came forward and said they had a certified coach who wanted to do one-on-one training with a player, then yes, uh, there would, we could, we could rent the ice for that use.
Okay, it looks like things are open if you have a lot of money. Um, and I, I'll just, I just wanted to comment about how frustrated both these restriction releases because it has nothing to do with staff. This is me, guys. But like when they say, oh, step two, we're gonna open banquet halls and community halls, but you can't have indoor gatherings till step three. So opening up a building and then saying, but nobody can go into it, is frustrating to me because it's not really a release of a restriction.
Why don't we, this, you know, why don't we, this is question, so that's a great debate.
I'm just frustrated, that's all. I share the frustration of everyone else in council.
Yeah.
But thank you guys for what you've done so far. I, the intention is there to try to fit what we can do with what we've got, so thank you. That's it.
All right, I have Council Hanson and then Council Watkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Diane, just going back to school hours and school uh use at Service Place. Um, I, I hope I understood this correctly. If, if things were normal and we weren't in COVID, all the rinks would be getting used during those times from all the various different uh sports academies during the school day. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so um assuming that they still have to fit in their curriculum at school, um, they have their four core courses in the morning and then they move to uh, to sports academy. Um, i- is it possible without the seventeen hundred dollars a day? Is it possible to give them the option at Service Place to have dry land or ice time? So that they can carry on with their school day uh little bit more, they'd get less ice time for sure. But then, or is it that they use for dry land their gymnasiums? Like, I don't know what they do usually in terms of their week?
Yeah, so our sport academies um do use our fields and gyms for dry land training as well as ice. So it's part of, uh, they'll come, they'll come over to service and they'll have some ice time and some field time and then they'll get bussed back to school for their educational period time in the afternoon. And then um we balance that out with maybe the public schools coming in the afternoon for their ice time and then they use the field in the morning. So we adjust and balance the utilization of those spaces around the needs of the schools and also their, uh, their curriculum needs back at school.
So when, when we're talking about this particular recommendation, those are all open still to them? Or are we closing those, those sports fields down and we're just opening up rinks for the school day?
So uh conversations right now, what we know from the schools is that they would like to have access to those spaces and uh that's uh what we'd be looking at in terms of how much time would they need on those spaces and if we were gonna have the ice open at Service Place, uh would it make sense to allow them access to the fields and gyms as well? And again, the point of today was to just provide a bit of a context in terms of some costs um that are, that, uh, to open these facilities. And yes, you're right, it's seventeen hundred dollars a week uh to have access to another field or gym at Service Place.
So re- regardless of whether it's only open through the school day or to the general, you know, till eight, eight PM at night, it's still seventeen hundred dollars per day.
And again, that was a rough estimate based on those hours of operation that we chosen and depending on the needs of the school and those kinds of things, if we adjusted the hours. Um, through our super cool use agreement, though, we do have uh school hours as eight to four, um, when they can access uh city facilities. But again, to the mayor's point, I mean, everyone may need to be flexible here and adapt and uh see if we can um meet everyone's needs with some modified flexible schedules.
Yeah, which I'm sure that they uh would be willing to do. Um, the second question I have is in terms of one-on-one training for athletes, don't we have a few businesses in town that actually like hole in the wall for, for goalie training? Um, the, the, these are our businesses that actually do one-on-one training for our uh younger athletes. Um, what happens with them? Are, are they, are they able to open in this? And can some of that one-on-one training happen within our small businesses?
So yes, we do have many businesses in the organ, in the community that would do like one-on-one goalie training, one-on-one sport performance training. Uh, so my understanding of these guidelines, and again, we're still waiting for all the details, but um that's what the intent of this easing was, is so those businesses could continue with one-on-one training in their spaces. And this even extends into our smaller boutique uh fitness facilities where uh it is more feasible for them to operate cuz they're smaller with the one-on-one training model.
Yeah, so it does, it does actually, the whole question does lend itself to, to more than just our fitness facilities. So I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Great, Council Watkins?
Another question, how many certified trainers do we have on city staff?
Um, Council Watkins, I don't have that number right now off the top of my head. Um.
We have ten or do we have twenty?
I would say between ten and twenty.
Okay, okay. So if we were to open the rec center, then it would give, uh, could possibly give those ten to twenty people their job back?
So personal, currently, personal trainers can also be fitness instructors. We are running a virtual fitness program. So we do have a lot of our instructors engaged in, in virtual fitness classes. Uh, so they um are already engaged in that, but yes, um, it would give them additional hours um based on some personal training programming.
And, and uh, they're, they're doing that stuff uh uh virtual now. Are they getting the same pay as if they were doing it in one-on-one at service?
Correct.
Oh, they are, okay, 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 thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, uh, Council Jolly.
Thank you. So just to clarify, we wouldn't make any decisions until we see the actual orders. Like, this is all kind of educated guesswork. Is, am I reading that correctly? Yes, okay, thanks Percy. Um, and then I guess kind of following up on kind of different options for one-on-one training. Are we, so certainly our, our personal trainers in the fitness area are kind of, we're looking at that about for options. Are we also looking at those same options for our skating instructors kind of to fill in downtimes? Or, you know, when I was a swimming instructor, I used to come in for two-hour shifts and, and do private lessons. Is that, is that kind of all on the table? Is kind of, w- we figure out the demand from sports group?
Yeah, so our skating club does most of our room-to-ski programming. We fill in the gaps with some preschool learn-to-ski. Um, and they're usually group lessons. Uh, if there was demand for one-on-one, we could look at that as we are looking, as potentially looking at one-on-one swim lessons. So it is something that we could change, you know, I guess, adapt our model in terms of how we deliver our programs to more of a one-on-one model.
Okay, thank you. And I, I guess, kind of having to do with that and, and the physical space that we have access to, are, are we considering opening up, you know, the whole upper floor of Service Place to, to one-on-one training? Is that kind of, is that on the table as well or are we just kind of within the box of the fitness facility?
So currently, what we're looking at is again, we are looking at a virtual personal one-on-one training right now. Uh, it's sort of similar to when we opened facilities last summer. It's a bit of an ease and a step. So as we know that there is demand there and as the restrictions potentially ease and we can provide more services, we would look to provide potentially more in facility. But right now, again, based on fiscal analysis and just trying to cut down the amount of overhead in our facilities, uh, that's what we were proposing, starting with virtual personal training. And then again, if the demand grows and uh, you know, there's a, there's a need for people that are, want for them to be in the facility, using the facility equipment, that is something that we could, through these orders, actually look at.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Really quick, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Council Mackay.
Uh, yeah, just something that Council Jolly just raised with the upper. I mean, as soon as, if we start offering one-on-one um individual training inside the facility, I'm sure that we will have a large group of people that will say, well, I'm walking on the walking track one-on-one and I can I book a time? I mean, is that completely forbidden in relation to it? Or will we have a, will we have, have that as a potential? Somebody was saying, well, I'm doing one-on-one, I'm walking on the track and I can book my time slot to walk on the track.
Yeah, but you need, it's one-on-one, it means a person and a trainer. So if they wanna walk with somebody who's training them out of walk, then that works.
I know, but I'm, I'm, I'm one, I'm just thinking that, I mean, we have a, a, a large number of our seniors that have accessed that facility just to do that and we will get a lot of questions on that if we, if, if we go that, this route or potentially we open ourselves up for that. And I'm not saying that's wrong, I'm just saying, it doesn't sound like the orders will permit that currently.
Correct, Council Mackay. The orders are very strict in terms of it's one-on-one trainer and a participant. And the whole intent of this was, again, I believe for smaller fitness facilities, cuz they do wanna definitely um restrict the number of people and uh contacts that could happen in a facility. So if you think of Service Place and opening up the mezzanine and if we had twenty one-on-one sessions, that's twenty people coming in and out, passing each other, um, potentially using, um, trying to remain physically distanced. But also, the more people you have in a space, you don't want people to congregate, they want to come in, have their training and then leave. Uh, so that was the spirit and the intent, as I understand, this current uh ease in the restrictions was um to address.
I have a meeting with you right now. I'm not gonna be there.
Yeah, did Tre- did you let Trevor know?
Did you have more questions, Council Mackay?
No, I, I just wanted to make sure council was aware of the possibilities. I mean, I'm certainly as, the, the more we use service and the more we open it up, the more um there will be a demand to access all of our facilities regardless. I mean, and I would, I would argue that walking on a track at minus forty for some of our senior population, particularly because the mall is not open for, for them all the time, so I, I just, I would be, I, it would, I don't understand the hazard of that, but I'm, I'm not the one issuing the orders.
All right, um, I'm seeing no more hands up and I'm seeing no more waving at me. So, uh, did we get an answer on if we pass the motion that's presented by admin with the, with the slight adjustment, open and close, um, what that financial implication might be?
So, uh, Mayor, there's, I have, there's some individual costs, so we know that if we drain Landracks, we save two thousand dollars a week. Uh, if we know if we take out two arenas, we save fifty-five hundred dollars a week. And these are again, direct costs. They're not all of the other, you know, costs associated with it. Um, and then we know that if we operate three arenas, uh, it's eleven thousand eight hundred dollars cost per week based on what we know to date in terms of the utilization. Um, and again, we're still talking to partners. If there are ways for organizations to have additional one-on-one training and we can book more ice and more field, that will change the whole numbers in terms of the cost recovery.
It's not that bad, actually. I look at it, six or seven thousand a week. Okay. Uh, anyone wanna make the motion as presented or something different? Go ahead, Council Jolly.
Thank you. Um, I, the original motion is fine. I'm just gonna change the reopen and close facilities to reopen or close facilities. You know, heaven has access to those numbers. And then I'm also gonna get rid of the kind of clause of cause fitness services to be opt, offered virtually. I, I'd really like to see flexibility in that if, if we feel like there's demand. You know, I, I think admin will be able to respond to that quicker than, you know, Mayor Heron calling a special meeting of council and rescinding that motion.
Right, if we pass it, if we pass it as worded, they can, that's all. Right, okay, good.
Yeah. Um, so the motion is that the COVID nineteen matters updates and discussion agenda report and accompanying PowerPoint present presented to council at the February four, twenty twenty-one special council meeting, be received as information and that CEO be authorized to reopen or close facilities under modified services and service levels to comply with provincial health orders and guidelines when the CEO deems it feasible to do so in consideration of public demand for facilities and financial vi- viability, provided that the CEO shall, as soon as operationally practicable, cause the ice to be removed from two arenas and the water to be drained from the Landracks Water Play Center.
Yeah. Okay, so you just took out the fitness offer for trip. Are you okay with that, Kevin and Diane? Okay. All right, I'll accept that motion. Uh, start your uh comments, Council Jolly.
Thank you. I, I see this as uh just a conversation about being flexible and giving administration a kind of the, the flexibility to respond to health orders, which we haven't even seen yet, um, when they come out as quickly as we can to kind of, as Council Broadhead said, give a little bit of hope for some of our, our residents who, who would like to use these facilities. So, um, thank you for putting this together. I know, you know, Diane and Percy and, and everyone, you've, you've put a lot of work into this and, and that is appreciated. Thank you.
Council Mackay.
Yeah, I'll just add comments. Um, a- and I appreciate that this may add extra costs, but uh, you know, it's, it's obviously becoming increasingly clear that the pandemic isn't gonna end anytime soon uh with uh all the bad news around potential variants and we all know that there even may be additional variants. Um, you know, this means we're just gonna have to figure out how we're gonna live and raise our kids and uh when uh seemingly every action that we potentially participate in, uh, we take and we have to recognize carries a little bit of risk. Um, I spoke a little bit about this and I know uh Council Broadhead also identified it, but you know, youth sports, and I'm gonna channel some of my recreation and physical education background. I know that's hard to believe, but uh I do have a background in that. Uh, but youth sports uh brings great benefits to our, our kids. Uh, team sports offers opportunities for exercise, uh, which is crucial for their um mental and physical health. But the, the big issue is, is it, it also allows for socialization and learning as how to be part of our community. And children need these uh opportunities. Matter of fact, seniors, all of us need these opportunities which are really uh particularly uh lacking during the pandemic. Which are really uh particularly uh lacking during the pandemic. Um so it'd be great um that we can find a way for our school kids to engage in sports during this pandemic. I mean, um so I I'm gonna end it on that comment. Um so I support this, I know there's a financial cost, but for all the reasons I just spoke about, I think it's important for our community.
Uh anyone else want to get in on debate? Counsel Watkins.
Yeah, I support it and I think um uh we have to um have some out of the box thinking here. And we have to look at the regulation, uh when we get it, I guess, and think of uh what we can do to get as many things open as possible at service. And you know, it's not always about profit versus loss. And uh like people are getting tired of this COVID thing, dragging on forever. You know, if you can get over to service and like somebody said, walk around the track, maybe we can get the track open somehow. Like, you know, we have to think of some out of the box reasons, you know, maybe there is, like if it's a certified trainer, maybe there is a certified walker. And somebody who will go over there and sit there eight hours a day and walk uh three seniors around the track nonstop. Or maybe we can get a pickleball club that certified pickleball trainers to go over there and one on one uh every day at the pickleball courts. But I think we have to think of more than just profit loss and have to start thinking about some out of, out of the box solutions. To get things moving at Service Place as it relates to like one on one training, because this is like, everybody's getting cabin fever. We gotta see what we can do, you know, one on one aerobics, one on one, whatever, maybe we can just fill up the day with different one on one things, one on one basketball instruction. Um so uh those are my comments.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Counsel Hughes and Counsel Hanson.
Yeah, I think that Counsel Watkins made a really good point, and that is that we have to behave a bit more like businesses do, which have been told to be very versatile. Throughout this and take advantage of any opportunities they can to stay afloat. And um we need to take the same attitude as we move forward on this, because as we can see that there's no end in sight here. And um so anything we can do to allow people to have some level of something they look forward to in their lives. I think we need to grasp on that. And the other, the other reason why I'm willing to support this. Is that it allows us to uh use those ice rinks and use the pool sooner. When the restrictions become released, and that's important, because when we drained the pool last time. It was a seven week delay between the time it was opened and the time that we opened our pool. And I, I'm hoping that we don't have to repeat that experience, that we can have it up within one to two weeks and have things starting to come back and reopen. And not tell people it's open, but it's two more months before you can use it. So um having these available in some capacity will allow us to um respond a lot quicker. So that when the restrictions are removed, people actually can enjoy their lives again in a different fashion, and that to me is also very important. So um I think that what's being brought forward with the three and potentially less, if there's not the demand, is um hedging our bets. With the hope that there will be a chance for the restrictions removed sooner and then also allowing the people to be able to take advantage of that sooner. Um so this is a bit of an investment to with a, a statement of hope, really. That this was, that that we, we will not need to have pools drained for two or four or six months. Or we will not need to have the arenas not being allowed to be used, that we're basically stating that we're hoping that things will come back sooner than later. And with the understanding that if they're not, that the city manager will reflect that. Um I'm just hoping that Mr. Scoble, when this does happen and if you do have to shut things down, I realize that we're giving you the authority to do so. Um but I, I also, I know that you're very committed with the council and to let us know what the decisions are when they come forward. Because um every time we shut something down, we're also making a statement that we don't think is coming up anytime soon. So that's it, thank you.
Counsel Hanson, did you?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Um yeah, I think I'm gonna support this, um the recommended motions. I I think that uh this is a pretty good compromise. Um you know, we, we could have just shut everything down uh and just said, let's reopen when we know it's super safe. Uh because this isn't super feasible, there's not a lot of sports that can do one on one, I mean, I uh ice skating can. But a- at the same time, um. Uh I'm really glad that we're gonna give our school age kids, the kids who are in the hockey academy, some normalcy. They signed up for this all year, this is part of what they do, uh and it gets them out on the ice. And 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 with any luck and uh with lots of hard work from community. We can maybe get these rinks open uh to the public a little sooner than later. Um you know, uh seeing I was done a really good job at trying to fol- follow these guidelines and it's been a tough haul. So um kudos to staff and I I also kudos to the school boards to. Uh they're, they're gonna have to adjust no matter what and uh it's, it's no easy task to just uh adjust a whole school day. And um for our kids, so um I think we're in this together. And this is a a good way to um partner with our school boards. And also maybe with some of that one on one fitness, allow those small businesses who operate uh from that, from that perspective. To start to open up, uh even if it's one client at a time. The virtual classes are going very we- very well at um at at fitness, um at the fitness businesses around town. Uh people have adapted, but there will be nothing like getting back into uh regular classes when everything can be open. So we've adapted to the options and that's because of hard work and um people like you, Diane and Kevin and Percy and all of our staff. So thank you for making this happen.
Um you did, sorry, uh I'll ju- I'm not gonna say much further. You've heard it from all of council, Diane, um Kevin and of course Carrie too, Percy. This is a lot of work um on weekends that, but we do it because we love this community and we do it because we love the people who live here. So um it's a compromise, I think the the hockey academies are gonna have to uh understand that. We can't open it all up, but I think they'll be fine with it. So now I just want to get the other sports back, you know, gymnastics and cheerleading and. All the other ones, because there's a lot of youth out there that this decision today won't really help them yet. So cross your fingers that we can get this uh vaccine rollout, curb down and everything to open up. Uh Natalie to close. All right, I'm calling for the vote, um just use your hands, that is unanimous, all right. That's the end of our agenda. Um I think that's it, anything else, Mr. Scoble?
No, I think we're good, Madam Mayor.
All right, I am adjourning the meeting at ten forty four AM.
Are we going, are we jumping to the other one? Kathy or is it cancelled now?
Uh do you want to try to do this in ten minutes or whatever, Diane? The briefing?
Um I can check with Trevor and see if he still wants to pull the group together. Uh we can uh call you on the, on the Teams uh call.
Okay, we're just, yeah. Tell Ryan to just drop us a quick email if it's happening.
Not for council, is it, Madam Mayor, it's for a different group?
It's the, um, yeah, no.
See you later, bye.
All right, take.